...for the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for coming tonight. The adoption of agenda for regular meeting, known to the provisions of the public meetings law of the state of Missouri, there must go ahead of a roll call vote, an agenda that includes a time, date, place, and chapter of agenda for the meeting. A copy of the notice and agenda for the meeting was posted on Monday, January 12, 2015, at the administration center, 1005 Waterford Drive, Forest, Missouri. At the same time, copies of the notice and agenda were mailed to major radio and television stations, to four newspapers, to all municipalities, to schools in the district, and posted on the district website.
Motion to be adopted, agenda for regular meeting.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hogseth and Dr. Thurman.
Reiver.
Aye.
Ms. Brown.
Aye.
Schrader.
Aye.
Ms. Thurman. I can vote up. Ms. Hogseth?
Aye.
And Mr. President.
Aye. All right, we're gonna jump over to the recognitions for early education teacher assistance secures technology donation from Emerson Electric. Dr. Ashley.
Good evening, board members, colleagues, and community. I'm here to recognize one of our early childhood instructional assistants. Ms. Cheryl Frager was responsible for obtaining a donation from Emerson Electric. I would also like to recognize and thank Ms. Donna Schmeling for her contribution to our department. She donated eight netbooks for use of technology for the early classroom teachers and students.
Could you come forward?
Yes, could you please come forward?
Hi, Ms. Schmeling, please come forward. And Ferguson Floreson Instructional Technology Specialist donated $1,000.
The Ferguson Floreson Instructional Technology Specialist, Mrs. Abby Irwin, recently received Montbon University's Center for Educational and Emerging Technology Fall Institute Prize. Mrs. Irwin donated the $1,000 award to the district's Early Childhood Special Education Department for the purchase of touchscreen tablets and cases that will be used to engage students in therapies and as augmentative and alternative communication device. As an instructional technology specialist and parent of a child with autism, Abby understands the needs of students that are diagnosed with autism and is committed to ensuring that students who have been identified with special needs receive effective instruction through the use of appropriate technology. Abby Irwin.
All right, this portion of the meeting is allocated to the board to provide an update of current activities and events in the district that may be of special interest to the fellow board members and to the community. So, Ms. Reiver, you're up.
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. I'm on the financial task force of the strategic plan, and I have four updates here. The Ferguson Floreson Foundation for Education has received additional funding this month for the new nursing scholarship that was established by Tricia Potter, who was a nurse in the St. Louis area. The total amount donated has increased to $9,860. We're also pleased to announce that our education foundation has received a donation of $10,000 from the Iowa JMS Charitable Foundation for their 2014 charitable donation. Number three, over the holiday break, our chief financial officer, Laura Madrusik, attended a public hearing in Kenlock to learn about the additional development of an area near Hanley and Scudder Avenue. The Kenlock City Council voted to buy a large area of land in order to develop an area beyond the North Park area. There is a company who's interested in building in this area, although the city cannot reveal the name of the company at this time because the developer is still in negotiations with them. Laura Madrusik requested from the city council that the district be allowed to negotiate with the company in order to recoup some of the funds that would be lost from the tip. The council was agreeable and stated that they do not intend to harm the district and would make sure to work with us. And then later in the meeting, Laura Madrusik will be presenting information on the upcoming bond issue, which I could speak tonight, as well as requesting that the board approve an amended budget for changes that have occurred since the budget was approved in June. We'll also hear the results of our fiscal year 2013-14 audit, which wraps up this month, later this month. So that's the update from the financial task force strategic plan. So it won't steal all the thunder, we've been really busy with the superintendent search, but a lot of people talk about that. Negotiations are going on with teachers, that's always interesting. I can't be on that, this is the first year I can't be on it because it's in my election year, but I'll tell you, it is a learning experience. That is where you really learn some things, so I always look forward to that. I was fortunate enough to meet with Patty Payton over at Central Elementary, and she kinda gave me an overview of the Myon reading that some of our schools have purchased. And it was awesome. I loved it. What can I say other than whatever, we'll get Patty's stand-up. Sure, there you go. And you know, there's a whole bunch of educators in here, and I don't even pretend to be one, I'll just say, oversimplify anything that gets the kids reading, interested in reading, it's plus. She actually tool it down to my son Jared, who, in fact, I got books to return today tonight, and so this is gonna be just a great experience for him. And last, I was able to go to Rockwood School District, hosted the Honors Choir from Cross Keys, well, they're part of the Honors Choir, some students, and my daughter's in there in the Honors Choir, you know, she, gosh, she's singing all over the house and everything, soprano. But anyway, I kinda come from a sports background, you know, so I'm going there as a dad, doing my dad thing, going, oh geez, you know, and it blew me away, it was awesome. And I'm like actually just so looking forward to the next concert. It was amazing, just amazing, and all the districts get together and kinda form a choir, and they work all day on that, and then they get a concert in the afternoon. So if we ever reach the point of STEM school, I definitely gonna fight for steam, and we've gotta put the arts in there. It was amazing watching all these young ladies, it was, the her portion was all with some of the great girls, they also had a mixed choir, so it just was just something I can't pin up and bottom, but anyway, I'll shut it and let you guys get going. Well, hello, I'm glad to be back. I did miss last month, and not fun when you lose your voice for half a week. This one, you're going with my voice. That was an experience, and I think some people in my family were not upset with that. Anyway, the district is launching a survey to the parents and to the guardians of our students. This is in regards to their communication preferences. The survey will remain open for four weeks. The survey will help us identify the communication methods that are most relied upon by these families, and that will be helpful in our ability to communicate with them. We're working currently on increasing community partnerships. One of the productive partnerships is with Great Circle. This agency has provided mental health support to our students and their families over the past several months. They also continue to offer additional support as needed to the district's guidance counselors as they work with students. Amy Cacciatore, Director of Student Services, has devoted considerable time and effort to develop partnerships with the mental health agencies outside of the district that significantly enhance services to our students, and this would be at no additional cost to the district. Another partnership put together by Ms. Kelly Bristow, who is district manager of food services, this partnership is with the St. Louis University Nutrition and Dietetrick, how do you pronounce that? I stumbled over that, I'm gonna continue to, Dietetrick's. Anyway, they have put together a program, Healthy Eating with Local Products, or Health, as it were, and this program will bring locally grown fruits and vegetables to the cafeterias in our district, which is very helpful. Also, we are working with the city of Ferguson to bring free story time at the Ferguson Community Center, as well as at the Ferguson Municipal Library. This will be throughout the month of February and the first week of March, and our parent educators from the Parent as Teachers Program will be the host of that program, so we're delighted to have you on. And it is good to be back.
Welcome back.
Well, thank you.
I'm working with Dr. Diggs on the academic achievement strand in our strategic plan. One of the important things is we've identified 68 5th graders that will be participating in our STEM Academy, I'm sorry the A isn't in there, but the STEM Academy in the first meeting was this past Saturday, so we're hoping to really see those students make some big gains with the extra efforts that they're putting in to bring those scores up. Dr. Diggs has also been working closely with area churches. Dr. Thurman and I have attended one of the meetings with her, meeting with pastors from the various congregations in our area, and how they can help us in terms of tutoring, in terms of supporting our kids, in terms of keeping the focus on doing well in school is a real important thing that you should be doing with your life. Along those same lines, there is going to be two large Martin Luther King weekend celebrations, or I don't know if celebration is the right word this year, but at least time to think about what we can all do to improve our community. One will be at the Greater Grace Church, which is right here on Parshall Road, and down the street at the St. Louis Community College is another one. Will be sponsored by the North County Churches United, Dr. Rance Thomas is in charge of that group. And I would encourage you to attend one of those if it's possible, and let's all work together to keep making our community a better place.
Happy New Year. I work, I serve on the student expectations committee, and we met a couple, a week ago, and we are working on the student code of conduct, going through it and checking what we have now and seeing how we can make it even better, and also working on it to make it better for teachers, for students, and for, really for our entire community. So we are working very hard on that, and hopefully, what we get out of it, our parents will be able to accept, read it, sign off on it, then do it, and teachers as well, it's really important, not that we just put this document together, but that it is useful to everyone in the schools, because our goal is to make sure that discipline doesn't disrupt instruction. I also am serving as an alternate on the negotiations board, and we met yesterday, that's an eye-opening experience, and I'm learning a lot. I haven't done that for a while, I did it as an administrator some years ago, but it's really wonderful to see how the association works with the board and with our administration team, really wonderful to see how they talk and how we can work things out and discuss things at the table that we may not totally agree on, but somehow we can collaborate, come together, and work out a plan that's gonna be beneficial for the entire district. Also, I'm very excited about our superintendent search and where we are with the search, I'm sure someone else is gonna talk about that a little bit more than I am, but again, another good experience for someone who's new on the board to go through that process. ProAct has done an outstanding job, and one of the things that they did say to us is that they were really surprised at how much this board pays attention to what goes on with the selection of the superintendent. He said that we are one of the, because he works all over the nation, and many of the groups don't read the information, and he was surprised at how many questions we had and how much we knew, you know, the candidates and all of that, so again, that has been a great experience. I was going to talk a little bit about the churches in our meetings that we had with some of the churches in the neighborhood. That is a gold mine, this is a gold mine in our district. The number of churches that we have and the number of people who are willing to help, so I'm excited again about serving on that committee, excited about the Justice Sunday, that's this Sunday at Greater Grace, and hopefully some of you will be able to attend that. The other thing that I want to talk about too is I want to talk about fellowship with the board. I want to thank two of my board members who attended my choir concert. We had a huge concert in the Sunny Mount Church, and two of my members came, and it's felt so good to see them in the audience and see them participate, and that made me feel good as a board member. It's very difficult when you're sitting on this side of the table to express to everyone how the board works together, and not just at the table, and not just about the school district, but caring about each other personally. So I want to say thank you to these two characters on the end who attended the concert, and not only attended it, but sat through the entire thing, and at our church, that's a big thing, it's very long. So again, just want to say thank you, and excited about all the things that's going on with the board and with the district. We're going to have an excellent school year.
And Paul, before you say something, I need to say something, and that was, it was a remarkably wonderful experience to be there with Dr. Thurman, and if you ever have an opportunity, and there are many opportunities, because they are a singing church, and to go and to visit, I walked away, and as she well knows, it was a blessing. Thank you.
By the way, you got characters right, that's the source. Excuse me. I was going through the calendar the other day and marking times when I had meetings and everything, and then Karen looked at it and said, "I'll see you sometime in February", and that's pretty much the way January's going, between the superintendent search, the negotiations, which I'm on this year, other board meetings, and technology meetings, and what else do we have? Anyhow, it goes on and on and on, so busy month, so I enjoy it though, so that's good. I'd like to thank Ms. Madrusik and Dr. Giudali and Mr. O'Neil for all their hard work on getting this upcoming bond issue ready and to go, and I was amazed the other day when I opened it up and magically appeared more money, which was great. And Ms. Madrusik is gonna tell you all about it here in a little bit, but I'm just gonna give you a couple of highlights, and we're gonna sell two different sets of bonds, one in 2015 for $16 million, one 2017 for $15 million, for a total of $31 million, and that's great news for our school district. It'll help bring safety, security projects to many of our schools to upgrade that so that our staff and students have a safer environment to work in. But most of all, I'm excited about the 2017 project for STEM school, and that really excites me. Been after that since the day I got on the board, and hopefully it's finally coming to fruition, so I really appreciate all your help getting that done. Negotiations, started that this week, and as always, that's a great time to collaborate with the staff in the district and administration, and just see how well everybody works together, gets things done, so we can move forward. I appreciate all the help. Also, I'm on the code of conduct committee, and Mr. Schrader, it still won't get down to one page. Try as we might, it's not gonna happen, you know? But anyhow, that's one of the projects we're working on, and just, my hope is that it helps and that everybody, students, staff, and administration follow the code of conduct, make sure that it is used appropriately, and helps create a better environment for all of our kids to learn in. That's all I have.
Well, again, I would like to also say happy new year to everyone, and I'm excited about that we're going into another year of 2015, and being at this end of the table, I want to say, everything I'm gonna say has already been said or brought up, but I will go into a little more detail. I'm also on negotiations, and it was just wonderful last night to see the warmth between both teams, and how everybody wants to, as you use the word, collaborate together to do what is best for our students as well as for our district. So I enjoy being on the negotiating team and just seeing how we work together. So thank you, negotiating team, and thank you for being part of it. My portion on the superintendent search is we had, ProAct has done a marvelous job, and it's a group that I would highly recommend, again, to anybody that ever has to use a search committee. It's the best search committee I've ever worked with, and they're really wonderful to work with. They brought to us 12 outstanding candidates, and it was very difficult, but we were able to narrow it down to six candidates. So we will be working together, bringing them into town, and interviewing six, and we hope to narrow that down to two or three to break to the public. And you will be hearing more in the next couple of weeks, so please watch the email and watch what Jana will be sending out, because we will be letting you know exactly what we're doing, when we're doing it, so that you can all attend.
Good evening, everyone, happy new year. We're back. Those two weeks were wonderful, but now we're back, and it's time to start work again. Second half of the year is here, 2015 is here. Teachers are ready, students are ready, the association's ready, as the board has mentioned numerous times, and I'll say it one more time, we are in negotiations. And of course, as we go into negotiations, our goal is always win-win. Last year was a tremendous win-win, we anticipate another win-win this year. Can't say anything else, because I don't know anything else. But I'd just like to say happy new year, welcome back. The teachers are ready, and hopefully we will do our best to get the children and students prepared, and hope that 2015 is a brighter year. Thank you.
Without covering too many of the items that were already mentioned, there are some significant ones that probably require a little additional attention. Education Plus has a program for McClure students, they will be participating on the St. Louis Student Summit on Race that will be held in Brentwood tomorrow. It'll start at 8:30 and it'll run throughout the day, and I think they're gonna use this largely as an example. There's, I believe, 12 different high schools that will be participating in this program, and it appears to be a very good opportunity, is a model that can be used for all the high schools in the area. On Friday, Berkeley Middle School has a program that will affect approximately 148 graders at the school, it's Project Dream Big. Many volunteer hours, community members have participated in this in the past. We're looking for a good opportunity there, and what it is, it's a culminating activity based on work that has been done by students in their communications arts classes. It was a study of the book, We Beat the Streets, and the information shared is that it brings students together to help support themselves as far as what the plans are. Plans to be successful, be motivated when it comes to their educational opportunities, and it has been well-received in the past, well-received through the school, well-received through the community, and it inspires the students to want to come back and continue to participate in it. So that will be taking place this Friday, so we're looking forward for good opportunities there. This weekend again, it has been mentioned that the Ferguson Floreson School District is a role player in the local observance of Justice Sunday. That is an annual event through the National Alliance of Faith and Justice. Justice Sunday honors Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. and his life of service to others. This year's observance will include a call to action for faith communities to engage with local schools to meet the needs of students. As Dr. Thurman and Mr. Schrader were pointing out, much work has been dedicated to this through one of our administrators, Dr. Gwen Diggs, and it's such a great opportunity. This weekend has a lot of competition for time, we were discussing that, there are opportunities at several of our local community churches. This year, through Dr. Diggs's efforts, she has been able to bring in representatives from the United States Department of Education. There will be service awards that will be presented to area churches that have assisted our district in serving our students and families during recent periods of community unrest, and this is an extension of something that is very dear to her, which is SOAR, which is Sunday Outreach to Achieve Results. Dr. Diggs has spent quite a bit of time, and I know that she's not alone, I know that we have representatives here that have spent a lot of time. Kevin Hampton has also participated in this, making sure that we have those relationships and build upon those relationships. It's a part of our strategic plan, and it works, meeting the needs of the district, meeting the needs of our students, and it's certainly beneficial, they have the support for the school district, and we support their efforts. So we're happy to be a participant, partner in this. Excuse me, there's also another one that I'd like to call attention to. That one is at Greater Grace. Excuse me. There's another event where there are going to be congressional leaders. Thirteen members of the Congressional Black Caucus will be present at Wellspring Church in Ferguson on Sunday. And we will also have representatives from the district at that event. It's a good opportunity for them to see that involvement. We've got some people here. Certainly encourage anyone that is interested in any of these events to let us know, and we'll get you information about them. So, finally, during the week of January 25th through the 31st, communities across the state will honor the dedicated service of members of local boards of education during School Board Recognition Week. And the goal is to build awareness and understanding of the important function an elected board of education plays in communities and schools. So, Missouri School Boards Association has provided our board members with certificates in recognition of the week, and for their dedication to the efforts to support our schools. So, we wanted to say thank you as that week approaches. That's the last I have.
Thank you. To piggyback on what Leslie was talking about, the superintendent search, it has been incredible that it is the goal of the board to be able to make an announcement sometime in, hopefully, February, the superintendent. As Leslie said, pay attention to Facebook, emails, you know, will be released to the media, then we anticipate having the public comment section for meeting the final candidate sometime at the end of this month. So, it's coming up very quickly, so we're pretty excited about that. I'll be participating in the Project Dream Big at Berkeley Middle on Friday as well. This will be my first opportunity to do that, so I'm looking forward to that opportunity. That's all I have. So, the next item is agenda number seven. The board allocates this portion of the meeting to allow stakeholders the opportunity to comment on both the agenda items and non-agenda items at the start of each board meeting. Prior to the public comment period, participants are asked to fill out a comment card with their name, address, phone number, email address, and topic to be addressed, and will be allowed up to three minutes to speak. This will allow the board or administration, or who they designate, get back to, if they feel that we need follow-up for that. Members of the audience who wish to speak to the board are requested to speak from the podium, identify themselves, and in keeping with district policies 4054, 4059, and Personnel Law, should refrain from making negative comments that are personally identifiable. While the board will not directly respond to speakers during the public comment period, they may make clarified remarks at the end of the comment session, primarily to kind of make sure we point people in the right direction. So, if anybody wishes to address the board at this time, and if you don't, the cards are back there on the table. If there's anybody that wishes to address the board, please step up to the podium.
Don't really want to be first, but I think about you too much, absolutely. I'm here for my own mental stability, so I get some good night's sleep and don't think about you quite as often. I didn't have a good schooling, and the only thing that kept me through life was algebra, geometry, solid geometry, trigonometry. And I want to, I've said this before, it's so important, but people don't understand why it's so important, and it's so important, because all it's doing is, all you're doing is solving problems. Creating the X, Y, Z problems that don't make any sense, but you're solving problems. And you're training your brain to solve problems. You can't get this across so much. They don't know why they're doing algebra or whatever, but you have to train them and tell them why they're doing this. And I want to take it a step further. How many of you heard or listened to Shark Tank? Let's take some hands.
Oh, yeah.
I don't see any hands. Very few hands, very few hands. If I was, if I were a teacher, I would, that would be my homework for the weekend, that they would have to watch Shark Tank. What would Shark Tank teach them? The first thing it would teach them was how you present yourself. If you're going to get your point across, if you have a good idea, if you have a good business, and you don't get your point across, the sharks will not invest in you. The other thing is, some of them are little, grade school kids, they have good ideas that promoted themselves and have presented to the sharks. The other thing is, like, the shark says, "You got a good idea, but we, but I'm out because you won't listen. I couldn't work with you." So, you have to be able to present yourself. And there's a lot of teaching and inspiration in, "You got a good idea? Click on it and go for it." Okay, that was my first one. Now, I'm going to change to the other point. You, you've been really impressed me since I've been here. I thought of you way down here when you were trying to raise my taxes. But since then, I've really, you've really been coming up. Well, the last, I wasn't here last time, the time before, you had these young girls who had this new recipe, and just went, "My appetite." I thought, "Man, wouldn't that be nice?" You need to promote yourself for residents like me who think down here. You have to bring them up and start thinking of you better, or you will never get our tax money. You have to do that. So, anyway, you went my appetite for this recipe, and I went to a restaurant, and I said, "Do you think you could do this recipe and promote the schools? Maybe blow up their picture or get it out?" And she said, "Yes." So, I have a restaurant who would promote it and make the recipe. I know you'd all want to have the recipe, all except one.
Sweet potatoes.
So, I'd like to know if this would be okay with you, and who could advise me? Okay, good. All righty. Anyway, that's it. Oh, yes. If I were a teacher, I would sing every, at least once a week, and I would say, "God bless America." And if anybody had any problem with that, I would tell them. I just want my students to be on the ball, and when they go to the ballgame, that they're able to sing it. And if I had a bad class, I would have some kind of a prayer every day. And if I had to say the prayer in Spanish one day, and German the next day, I would just tell them, "Well, it's just education in another language." And we need that too in schools, believe me. Thank you very much.
Is there anybody else I wish to address?
Matt Meyer on New Hall.
I'm Jim Clark. Most of you know me. I've been a board member for 31 years, and I've been off the board for now three or four years. But anyway, I heard one of the board members comment that they're part of the negotiating committee, and I wondered if we've changed policy? Because it's my understanding, at least when I was on the board, board members observed what was going on, but didn't participate in negotiations. Has that changed? Okay, thank you.
She actually corrected it at the time, sir.
I'm sorry, I just, I'm very, it's going up louder.
Is there anybody else I wish to address the board at this time? Seeing none. But, our agenda item eight, declarations of candidacy. The three-year terms of Ferguson-Floreson School Board members Paul Schrader and Brian Scott Eber are expiring in April of this year. Declarations of candidacy may be picked up at the office of the superintendent here at the admin building between the hours of 7:30 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. on the days that the district is open. The filing deadline is, closes at 5:00 p.m. this coming Tuesday, January 20th. Is there anybody at this time who is considering running for the office of Board of Education that would like to stand up? Thank you.
I think I'm supposed to speak right now. My name is Roger Hines. I've been in Floreson for about 10 years. Good evening. My name is Roger Hines. I have been in the Floreson area for about 10 years now. I'm a St. Louis native, been around. I have children that go to the district, which is why I was kind of running when I got here. We had a basketball game at Chaminade this evening. My children go to North and Combs. So, I've been around for 11 years, working with the Combs School and Cross Keys, as well as McClure and North. Part of the PTO at Combs. I've been, I've tried to be part of the PTG at Cross Keys, that didn't work out very well, but I've been around and been active in the district for about 10 years now.
All right, at this time, the Board of Education will take a short recess to congratulate those recognized at the meeting. We'll reconvene in 10 minutes at 7:55.
All right. Say, if you're all your questions, Shark Tank comes on 10:30 on Friday.
Hi, agenda item number 10, the consent agenda. The administration presents the following items for the Florida's agenda. Mr. Morris, please read the disbursements.
Payroll, teacher and non-teacher, $8,52,203.35. Operational disbursements, $3,214,123.90, for a grand total of $11,266,327.25.
Second.
Motion for V by Ms. Hogseth, seconded by Mr. Eber. All in favor of the consent agenda, you say aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have.
Mr. President, could I, could I take a point of personal right here?
Sure.
Ms. Kelly, now that it's official, I'd like to thank you for your service to the district.
Thank you.
Mrs. Kelly is retiring, and after how many years?
With the district, 18.
18, and how many total?
27.
27, very good, congratulations.
Yeah, I'm being a little early.
That's all right.
Praise the Lord, praise the Lord.
All right, curriculum and instruction, ability level progress. Dr. Bland and Ms. Wenzel.
This evening, I have Ms. Robin Witherspoon from Johnson-Walbash. She will come up and share information regarding her data dashboard and accountability plan, which you've already received, but she's going to highlight one significant program from Johnson-Walbash. And so, her focus is going to be the Visible Learning Lab at Johnson-Walbash. So, Ms. Witherspoon, if you could please come up?
I'll tell you a little bit about Johnson-Walbash quickly. Every year, Nicole puts her timer on and tells me I have, I thought seven minutes, but I heard it was five, so I'll go quickly. I want to acknowledge my staff is here. Would my Johnson-Walbash people please stand? A lot of staff. I'll tell you about the kind of school we have, and I'll just tell you a little bit that we do pray every morning. You'd be surprised, you might not allow prayer in school, but people do pray every day. And there's a lot of singing. As a matter of fact, I'll start off with the cheer. You ready? Let me tell you a story about JW. It's about, come on, get the beat, come on, get the beat, people, wait up. Let me tell you a story about JW. It's about this school that's really cool. We got the teachers, the parents, the students too, but it wouldn't be a school without you know who, Ms. Witherspoon. All right, you know I want you to. Johnson-Walbash is a great place to be. It's a very energetic place. And I was a principal and reading teacher and coach and all that at Griffith, and I moved over to this beautiful building, Johnson-Walbash, and I tell you, I've never worked so hard in my life. It is very energetic, but I love what I do. Our students have to study Johnson-Walbash. Who was Johnson, and what is Walbash? They have to know that. They write reports every year, so they can tell you the history. Not only that, but the history of the land that the school is on. Who are we? We're a school of extremes. Get to know us. Our boys and girls come from Berkeley, Kenla, Ferguson, even a little bit of Calverton Park. So, we have four communities that all come together. We are a school with the most homeless students, I've been told. We pick up the most bags of food every Thursday to feed our students. We have 22% of our students have an IEP, so we embrace all learners. We embrace kids who have a variety of exceptionalities at Johnson-Walbash. We're quick for them. We also have qualified, how many, Ms. Peckman, just this month?
Four.
We had four, and how many last month?
Seven.
Seven, so we are finding what our students need, and we're meeting their needs. I'm going to just show you our school in pictures, because we call ourselves a visible learning lab school. That means it's okay to make mistakes. It's okay, because that means you're learning. When you walk into the classroom, don't ask the teachers what they're doing, ask the students. If they can't tell you what they're learning and why they're learning, we're not engaging them. I have pictures of our transition last year over to the church, when we had the water pipes to burst in our building. Is Tom Dunn left here tonight? He always jokes he does not want to be in a building with me because something will happen. Well, not on wood. We have not had anything. But we made that transition quite smoothly. Learning did not stop. We are a PBS award-winning school. Where my PBIS team, stand up, keep you stand up. These people worked with me this summer, came over tonight. This is where the universal, so that our boys and girls have a structure and a system for everything that we do in our building. And we will have our first award applied one time in just one this year. We have a lot of things going on, I won't even name them all, but we're a school of scholars. We call our boys and girls young scholars. And our scholars are people who do the right thing. They work hard. They show what? What they show, peace and love. They have to be safe, responsible, and respectful. And we honor them once a month with a fun activity. We had spores, nacho cheese parties. And it's about service. You see, they collected canned goods to give away. In the academics piece, we are totally data-driven. Every Thursday is our data team day. We look at ELA the first Thursday, math the second Thursday of the month. We look at writing, and then the last part of the month, science and social studies. A part of that, too, is looking at our behavior. When our academic goals are up and posted in our rooms, Dr. Diggs came over and she was talking about what the district initiatives are. I said, no, Dr. Diggs, let my staff tell you. We're on it. We have our due mouths. Our non-negotiables are in place and we believe they're working out. We have our star readers, our data is up, our PBIS data is up. We're looking at our attendance. We have several students that were getting qualified for homebound because of chronic illnesses, so that we can improve our attendance. A lot of things we do at JW, our career fair. Our students are studying universities already, talking about where they want to attend. We have people that come out and present. Annual events. We embrace the community, we embrace the churches, we look for their help. And they have been out to support us in our endeavors. Several of you have come to read to our boys and girls and celebrate with us. We've had Teachers of the Year, Support Staff Members of the Year. We have a Maryville University Initiative where our teachers are learning to teach children as though they're gifted. A lot of support from our intern this year. Thank goodness, our coaching staff, our reading teacher. We are so thankful, so thankful for all of the support. We're a school of peace, we're a school of love. And we believe that that is essential. I know a lot of times people say, oh, here we go with that goofy stuff. But in this day and time, like never before, we have to give our kids strategies for peaceful ways to resolve things. And love just transcends everything. We tell our boys and girls, love simply means, I treat people what the way I want to be treated. And peace simply means that I calm down and I respond appropriately. So our boys and girls, you can't see it, they make the sign, "Thank you", "Thank you" up there to say, "Thank you for your support, Ferguson Florescent". I have been so supportive with so many things this year as we try many initiatives to help our boys and girls. It's tough. We have a lot of hurting children in our building. We have a lot of kids who are coming with crisis situations. And my staff is stepping up. And they're stepping up to this challenge. If you come by my building on any Saturday, you see several cars, people out there trying to find a way to make it work. This is the hardest working staff I have ever worked with. I say that every year. The hardest working staff I have ever worked with. I'm so fortunate. So I must have them stand again because I'm presenting, but they are the reason. So we are a Visible Learning Lab school. Simply means, if you can't see learning happening, then we're not doing a good job. And we want to be better with striving, striving, striving. Staff, please stand up again because of...
I would like to say something real quick. I'm very proud to say that I hired her as a teacher. And from a teacher, encourage her to go on to become an administrator. I'm very proud of you. It's Witherspoon, I'm sorry, it should be Dr. Witherspoon.
Almost.
Just throwing that out there.
I'm working on it, I'm almost there.
Good evening. Next up is Susan Kelly, Principal Ferguson Middle School. She presented her update of her achievement plan, or accountability plan, to the board. And then tonight, she's going to present on a unique program at Ferguson Middle, but she doesn't want me to say what it is. So, secret. And let me go get that started for you?
Oh, yes. So we can.
Are you sure?
Yeah, they're gonna do it right there.
We have a couple minutes. Good evening.
Good evening.
I want to take this opportunity to thank everyone. It has been a true joy, a journey. And they call it retirement, but you know, I'm not going to retire. I'm just going to enter a new chapter.
That's right.
There are a lot of young, talented, aspiring administrators who have been circling my office for years. Just nipping it out to see when is she gonna go. They are all just like fighting. So you're in great hands, you're in great hands. The talent is amazing, and I wouldn't leave you in any other situation. This has been an interesting year. It was really tough this past summer with the delay of the school year and figuring out how we are going to open our doors and welcome our students. In situations like this, you only get one chance to do it right. And my staff rallied around and we made sure that we welcomed every student with a welcome gift, greeted them at the buses. The community was there, board members, board members' wives and husbands, other schools, put flags out in front. And that was great at day one. But I knew, we have to carry this through. And at that point, it's up to us to stick together and be the family that we've always been. And as I reflect back on how we did this, because we were successful. Our students were good. We gave our students a voice. And people ask me, you know, how did you keep it together? And number one, as an administrator, you always have to gain face and you always have to be strong and you always have to make sure that everyone knows, I got it, we got it. And as I reflected back on how we did it, it was our students. Our students supported me, supported the teachers, supported each other. Our student council came together under the guidance of Ms. James. Student councils are often made up of 10, 12 students. This year, 82 students came together to help. And 13% of our student population, because they know we have their back and they knew that I needed them. I needed them because we have to be strong for the community. And I thought, I'm gonna put together a PowerPoint showcasing student council. And then I was immediately informed that PowerPoints are so out, Ms. Kelly. We don't do PowerPoints anymore, Ms. Kelly. We do Prezis. And I'm like, no, we do PowerPoints. And they're like, no, we do a Prezi. They even showed me a Prezi. And I'm like, that's a Prezi? Well, okay, okay. I had to think about it for a couple of days, but Ms. Kelly, you know, she came around. So this is just a glimpse of what our students did for Ferguson Middle School to keep us strong. That's how we spend, that is how I get to spend every day. I get to drive up to Ferguson Middle School and I'm greeted, I'm loved by these wonderful students. And I don't know, I know that not a lot of you out there have a job like that. And it's hard to walk away from, but it is for them. They need someone who can run 150 miles an hour. And right now, I'm only up to 110, so. Thank you.
Did you have faculty in?
Oh, yes, Holly, I'm sorry, Ms. James, I'm sorry. My student council graduate sponsor. And her daughter Zoe is a sophomore and she has guided us about the future of student councils, of where we need to be. And of course, Dean's here, my right arm. And of course, over there, Holly and Haika and Carolyn and Jean. And for Hyde. And Larry's an alum. He's an alum. I said Haika.
Thank you very much. It's Dr. War. You're up to talk about the Benchmark Phonics Startup Levels 1, 2, and 3.
Good evening. I am here requesting approval for the purchase of the Benchmark Startup Levels 1, 2, and 3. The Benchmark Startup Phonics Program is designed as, to be used as part of our balanced literacy block of instructors for grades K through 2. It represents a research-based, explicit, and systematic approach to teaching phonics, which will provide students with flexibility and authenticity of letter learning. And we are asking to purchase 122 kits at a cost of $695 per kit for a total of $84,790.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Hogsett, seconded by Mr. Schrader. All in favor of purchasing the Benchmark Phonics Startup? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have. Dr. Diggs and Dr. Ashley to book up the Early Childhood Special Education Transportation Contract.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The Early Childhood Special Education Program is required by law to provide services to students of the Ferguson Florescent School District. We currently have one student who resides in Ferguson Florescent but attends a daycare in Ferguson, in Parkway School District. Typically, Parkway is able to provide services. For this child, they were not able to accommodate this particular student. He attends a daycare called Strictly Pediatrics. Because of his medical needs, he cannot attend a daycare. There's not appropriate daycare within the Ferguson Florescent boundaries. So we have entered into agreement with her student to provide transportation for this student for the remainder of this school year for a cost of $15,000. Parkway will work with us for next school year to provide reciprocal services for this student.
I move we accept this transportation cost.
Do you have a second? Do we have discussion?
I have a question. It says the district will receive 100% reimbursement for early childhood?
Yes, the Early Childhood Special Education Program receives 100% of this funding from DESI.
I did ask a question earlier regards to if the student was dismissed today, still the contract of $15,000, it'll be prorated based upon the number of days of payments and this has been prorated by the number of days until.
Yes, and we just have to call 30 minutes prior to, if we know the student's going to be absent. And the daycare will work with us to make that phone call to transportation.
Have we used this daycare before? Because, so this is a unique situation.
This is a unique situation. We have not, typically Parkway can provide services. They did not have room this year. So we are required to provide services for the student because he is a Ferguson Florescent resident.
Any questions? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the Early Childhood Special Education Transportation Contract, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have. Dr. McMillan for the counselor and librarian standards. This is for board information.
After Dr. Rock, we'll be making the presentation and discussing it this evening. In the previous year, you had adopted standards for teachers and counselors within the Ferguson Florescent School District for the NE, the Emperor Educator Evaluation Process through this district. And this evening, we're asking for you to take a look and to adopt the other standards which are in place. And so we should be here to answer questions and to learn a little about those standards. Dr. Rock has been working with the district in doing the NEE Evaluation System which is wide across the district. We're calling it the NEE.
Please speak up.
I will, I'm already done.
Well, next time, would you please?
I will.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dr. McMillan already said much of what I was going to say, actually. So, as he stated last February, the board adopted the Network for Educator Effectiveness Systems for Teachers, Administrators, Librarians, and Counselors Evaluation. And at that same meeting, we adopted the Teaching and Administrator Standards. But NE, or the Network for Educator Effectiveness, had not fully developed their system for counselors and librarians. So since they recently shared their completed standards with us and those standards mirror the DESI standards, the Evaluation Revision Committee is requesting that the board adopt those standards at this time so that we can fully implement those two evaluation systems with our staff for next year.
Now, it's for board information only, but do you have any questions?
It's important in my mind that they be uniform across the board, that we're hitting the same thing for all of our staff. So if that's what we're doing, it's in the super.
Yes, all counselors across the district, all librarians across the district. They'll be uniform for all.
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Dr. McMillan, freshman baseball coach at the Florescent Park.
This evening, we're requesting the authorization of an extra paid position, an assistant baseball coach for freshman baseball team. This would be a stipend of $3,106. The Florescent Park freshman baseball team actually existed last year with the junior varsity and varsity coach who were volunteering their services to coach that team. They haven't had the team in a few years, haven't been that many athletes out. And last year, they had a large number of athletes. They're anticipating that same large number again this year. It's been a positive aspect of the program. And so this year, we would like to go ahead and authorize a regular freshman baseball coach's position. This position exists at the other... This position exists at the other two high schools, and so this would be basically commensurate across the board.
I move we hire a freshman baseball coach.
Second.
Mr. Brown.
Give it to Mr. Brown.
Any questions regarding the freshman baseball coaches? Hearing none. All in favor of the approval of a freshman baseball coach at the Flora South Berkeley, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have it. And Dr. McMillan again, the elementary school English Language Arts Interventionist.
This evening, we're asking for the approval for a new position. This would be an English Language Arts Interventionist Position for Halls Berry Elementary School. This would be paid for by Title I funds, it would be a part-time position, second special, only 15 hours per day. This would be working with students who are at risk.
Paid for by the board.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Huxett, seconded by Mr. Eber. Discussion?
Are they going to be working in specific schools or are they going to rotate among the schools?
This would be just at Halls Berry.
At Halls Berry. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor of the English School, Elementary School English Language Arts? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have it. And Dr. McMillan, Secondary School.
We are requesting this evening to add two math interventionist positions from a Flora South Berkeley High School and also Berkeley Middle School, one at each building. This would be for the remainder of this school year. And in these two schools, the math EOC scores and the course exam scores have dropped from 2013 to 2014. These positions would allow for small group instruction in math based on student needs. These would be priority funds, which are pending approval from Marine Class C May Rosar DESI Area Supervisor. So these positions will be contingent on the approval for that contract.
Motion to accept this? Second. Motion made by Mr. Huxett, seconded by Mr. Eber. Discussion?
When will we, when will you know if it's been approved? What's the timeframe?
We're hoping this week.
Okay.
I sent an email this morning to the Marine Class C May Area Supervisor and she's waiting to hear back from someone else. So as of 3:30 today, she still had to hear back from the people to grant approval. So we're trying to get it as soon as possible.
Good, I just didn't know a month.
No, I would hope by the end of this week.
How soon can you get them in the classroom? After that?
As soon as we get the approval, we'll post and then move as quickly we can through that process.
Good idea.
Just to clarify, these are full-time positions at this level?
Yes.
The elementary one is part-time.
Yes. Exactly.
And this is only for this year?
Correct. The priority funds that we have, we only know about allocations for this year, not for next year at this time.
All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Hearing none, ayes have it. District-wide copier purchase maintenance agreement. Mr. Mill.
Thank you. Dean Irving. We put out a request for bids for this district copier maintenance agreement and advertised about six packets, four vendors actually bid on it out of the six. One of the main reasons we're pursuing this at this time, we thought that maintenance agreements would bring us a cost savings, which we discovered it would. These weren't just sealed envelopes, they were sealed boxes, a lot of the specification and information that they provided to us. If the board does approve this agreement, it will include a replacement of all of our Sharp computer, our copiers in our district. A lot of people in the audience probably know that the Sharp ones are the older copiers that we constantly are having problems with repairs on right now. This would include 96 new copiers, 30 of those being colored. And later on, I'll talk about why we're introducing color into it. It also will include delivery, installation setup, implementation, and any upgrades and modifications over the time period. There'll be unlimited district operator training, there'll be maintenance, emergency repair service, including preventive maintenance. All consumables and its supplies are included except for paper. Off and onsite monitoring, we paint off our current equipment and they'll be providing new hard drives and paying for the destruction of the old hard drives. They'll also be provided with monitoring software and programs. One of the important ones is paper cut. Before we were putting this out, the IT division of our school district asked about getting this program, ranges in different, whatever program you get from $1,000 to $10,000. We waited on that and one of the vendors, the one that we selected, which is DNT, is providing that free charge to us to monitor the paper used on our copiers and eventually our printers so we can try and find ways to reduce the use of paper and ink cartridges. They also provide a software called FM Audit, which allows them to audit our copiers, they can watch them at all times. So when they can see problems that occur, instead of waiting for a service call, they can take care of it possibly over the phone or sending out someone to do the service. And they have another program, and IT could probably explain these much better than me, but Ebridge Cloud with Management Print Service. It's another safe card program that they can watch 24/7 for our maintenance schedule repairs and using the cloud technology to notify us and to get the parts and supplies that are needed. The total bid was for $22,695 per month. And we were requesting to include 30 color copiers to increase the total bid to $23,895. Our current agreement does not include maintenance or consumables or the existence or the extensive support and software that for monitoring that they're offering. We provide the labor at this time, parts and all consumables and replacement cost in parts whenever necessary. Based on this, our cost savings by entering this agreement include $50,000 in copier replacement cost, $15,000 minimum toner replacement cost, $10,000 minimum parts cost, and $75,000 in labor or salary. Due to this agreement, we have eliminated one, if we get this agreement, we are going to be eliminated one vacant AV position. It's currently vacant due to retirement of an employee and so we won't be losing any one, any person actually, but it will, they will do the job that that person did. So we'll have that savings for a total annual savings of $149,000. Also, we hope to have additional savings, as I said, I'd get to the 30 color copiers. The idea is that we'll be beginning to eliminate the use of a lot of our desktop individual printers. They are just money eaters. Cartridges, we order over 45 different cartridges across the district, so we can't stock a lot of cartridges, so we'll buy four or five and then those printers go out and now we have cartridges that we can't use. So this will start to get us into the mode where we have the same printers, we have the same cartridges, and we have less cartridges. So what will happen, for example, in my particular office, I'll use our office as an example, we'll be one of the ones that will get a color copier and it will access our printer. In my office area, there are six of us and we each have a desktop printer and we don't need that. And so now we'll have a colored copier that will access the printer and a copier outside in the main area and the six of us will share that. Further down the hall in our office, the same situation, we have eight people having their individual ones, they'll have one that they'll share. So that will be one of our cost savings and they plan that saving us over $1,200 a month just with this initial before we get the paper cut information and so forth. So as you can see, this will be a good cost savings for us and hopefully it'll bring future cost savings as well. Tonight, we're asking for your approval for that contract for $23,095 a month, including colored copiers.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. War, seconded by Mr. Huxett. Discussion?
I just, six years ago, or about six years ago, I had conversations with a gentleman who had similar software and I tried to get him to come forth or get an appointment and that was difficult enough and it never happened, but it would have saved us money for the last six years had he done that. And they can monitor how much toner is left in all these and they can, they bring them out the day that they need them and you don't have lost inventory because the machine goes down and that cartridge doesn't fit anymore and it's a great idea. So thank you.
In case I forgot to mention, it's DNT.
Excuse me?
The company is DNT.
DNT, it was a different company, but same product.
And I also want to thank, the finance department helped quite a bit and IT helped write the specifications.
Very good.
How long is the contract?
This will be a four-year, or a five-year contract. Five-year contract, I'm sorry.
Any other questions, comments?
How long will it take to phase and are you gonna just take them all out at lunch?
No, it'll be over about a two to three month period, depending on how quickly they can do it. They're trying to do it as quickly as possible because the quicker they do it, the quicker we save. So we're trying to get it done as quickly as possible. There's still some areas where they're trying to make, they're still evaluating part of it of where the color, we don't have every single color copier designated at this point yet.
One thing that was possible, but was never done, is that teachers could create documents and send them right from their desktop to the main computer and then they could be printed out or printed from there. We've had the ability, we've just never done it. Is that going to be part of this project?
Yes, and also I failed to mention it, we'll be able to scan an email from the copier. So if you want to send someone, somebody you send it to the copier automatically, send it off as a scan or can email it to someone from the copier.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the district-wide copier purchase maintenance agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Thank you. Dr. McMillan for the Human Resources Screening Program.
This evening, we're requesting approval to purchase an online talent screener. One of the things that we had within our comprehensive school improvement program planned for the district and for the human resources department was develop an employment screener. We did go ahead and do a request for proposal, RFP, we had six companies that we contacted, we had four companies that provided bids to us. We had a committee of five administrators from the buildings, building principals and assistant principals, and we also had five central office administrators that reviewed those proposals. We narrowed those proposals down to three and invited them into presentations for us. They were done via a web service. For those proposals, we narrowed it down to one preferred candidate and a second one that was very close. The preferred candidate I had used previously, as a result, I knew what the budget portion that had been in the school district I had worked in. I felt that the bid that they had provided to us was high in comparison to the rest of the district. So I went ahead and contacted that company and asked them to take a look at everything again in line with that. They did make a slight adjustment to it, but the adjustment is still, the amount is still very large. As a result of that, I'm going to be recommending the company that we had as our second. Now I want to understand that the first and second add up to 256 to 254 as far as our scoring. So it was exceptionally close between the two. The original bid from the company that we had contacted was $90,000 for a three-year contract and they dropped it down to $84,000. The company that we're going to be recommending this evening is $20,700 for that same three-year period. And the company we are recommending is Frontline Technologies, Athletrac. They have a teacher fit program, assessment program, they also have an administrator fit, a support staff fit, and also an urban teacher fit program.
I move we accept the Human Resource Screening Program.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Huxett, seconded by Mr. Brown. Do we have questions?
The bids are so far apart, it makes everybody wonder.
How soon would you be able to implement this?
It would be probably at least a month if we can get everything running. It takes time for a setup and also integration with the current application system. We would have normally brought this, would have brought this to the board in December, but because of the cost differential, we really wanted to try to bring it down through many contacts with the other company. We just simply weren't able to get to what we felt was a reasonable bid.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor of the Human Resources Screening Program Frontline, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Modruzik for the Annual Audit.
Good evening, Board of Education and everyone else. Every year, school districts are required to have an annual audit and this year, I'm happy to report that our audit has been completed. And our auditor from the accounting firm of Shaw Walter and Jabori is here, his name's James Torrey and he's going to go over the audit results with you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
To briefly summarize, your financial statements are prepared on the modified cash basis of accounting, which is a basis of accounting other than generally accepted accounting principles. On page one of the financial statements, you'll find our independent auditor's report. And in that report, we give our opinion on the financial statements. Our opinion is that your financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects on the modified cash basis of accounting. With regard to federal and state reporting, we noted instances of deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting that we are required to report. We also noted findings over compliance and internal control that we are required to report related to your federal awards programs. With regard to the June 30th, 2014 financial highlights, the district ended the year with a total fund balance of approximately $27 million. In the operating funds, which are the general and the special revenue funds, the total fund balance was $18.6 million. Of that amount, approximately $14.4 million is unassigned or unreserved. This represents approximately 11.7% of the 2014 expenditures in those funds. These operating funds had an increase in fund balance for the year of approximately $1.2 million and the budget for 2015 for the operating funds projects a deficit of approximately $3.7 million. In addition to the audit report, we also issued a report on internal control-related matters, advisory comments, and other matters. In this report, we have reported to the board the deficiencies in internal control over financial reporting and compliance over federal awards that we noted, along with other suggestions for improving internal control and operating efficiency. And management in that report has included their responses to each of our comments. In addition, we have also provided an update to the status of the prior comments. And finally, we've issued a report titled Report to the Board of Education, which includes required communication with the board at the conclusion of an audit. And I would like to thank Ms. Modruzik and her staff for all the courtesies extended to us during our audit and I would be happy to answer any questions that the board may have.
I move we accept your input.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Huxett, seconded by Mr. Schrader. Questions, discussions regarding the annual audit. All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Fiscal year 2014-2015 budget amendment.
I'm sorry, I can't get my PowerPoint started. Dr. Jay, could you help me? I will go ahead and start. At the beginning of the year in July, we did start, as was noted by Mr. Torrey, we did start the year with a deficit balance of $3.7 million in our 14th we did start the year with a deficit balance of $3.7 million in our 14-15 budget. I am happy to come to the board tonight with a budget amendment, and there are several reasons for the amendment, and I'd like to go over those at this time. As we stated before, the beginning balance was $27 million. Of that, in the operating funds were $18.6 million. Those are the funds that we're able to operate our daily funds with. There's also the bond fund that we had a balance of $5.9 million, and those funds are from bonds that we sold. And we are, we have specific projects for facilities, technology, bus services and things like that, or bus, buses and things like that. And then we have the debt service fund of $2.5 million roughly, and that's what the fund that we use to pay off our bonds. We had a fund ending balance of 14.71% this year. So there were some economic changes since, the budget is a living, a living, moving object, and it changes daily depending on the economic things that are happening in the area. We did have, we worked very hard and we had a voter-approved tax increase of 50 cents, and that greatly impacted our budget for the good. We had a stabilization of assessed values. This, in the last five years, we've continued to see, to see a decline of assessments. And this, and this year, I'm happy to report when we received our December numbers, they were stable and they didn't drop for 3%. We actually stabled off, so stabilized off, so that was actually some great news. Our sales tax revenue in the state of Missouri is up by 4%, so that's very good news. That will bring in additional revenue to the district. We also will be, I did not include in the budget because at the time of the budget creation, we were, we were not quite sure about what was happening with Riverview Gardens and Normandy School Districts. So I have included, we do have the numbers of those students that are attending, and we will be charging tuition for those students, and those numbers are now included in the amendment. Unfortunately, we had some unrest in our community, but the community and people beyond have been very generous and have made donations to the district, and so those are included in here. And then we also had adjustments. I've evaluated the budget and looked and made some adjustments for year-end actuals. We look at actuals and that's how I kind of base my budget moving forward, and I did make some adjustments for that. So some of the big revisions that we had, because of the tax increase, we were able to bring in $4.8 million of additional revenue. Delinquent taxes are coming in lower this year. We had a really, people really paid their taxes that were late last year, and we had a really good year last year, and I projected a little high. So I needed to back that off because they're not coming in like they were last year. Prop C's tax, taxes are, sales tax is up and so, or buying is up, so that means that sales tax revenue is up, then we're going to have additional $250,000. Bank interest, just, it's not moving. We're not getting any higher interest rates, so I had to lower that about 50,000. And student body activity, I based that on last year's activity. It didn't come in like I thought we should. We've received about $95,000 of donations, so that's really wonderful. And one of, specifically 80,000 or 50,000 of that went to celebrate children. Basic formula in classroom trust did not come in, is not coming in the way I thought it would either, so I need to reduce those numbers. And then the tuition from other districts is 1.3 million. So I'm increasing the revenue of our 14-15 budget by 5.5 million dollars. And then, we also have some expenditures that I need to add. We met with the board and discussed some ways that we could bring up our accreditation scores, and we added some projects. So $367,000 was added back into the budget for some special projects that we think that will really help our students gain some achievement. We had promised the public that if Prop S passed, that we would bring back some of the cuts that we had. We had to make some significant cuts last year. So we had promised to bring some of those back, one of them being after-school busing. We had cut that out of the budget, so we were able to bring that back in. So we've added back in $356,000. We also added some additional educational supports of $68,000. There were some budget reductions that were not taken at 100,000, and then again, programs that are funded by donations are 90,000 dollars. So we're, I'm adjusting the total expenditures up by 98, $982,000. So the impact on that budget, you can put the approved budget in the amended budget so that you compare, compare the two. The revenues are, again, the $5 million, and then the expenditures up by the 900. So that increases our ending balance from $12.8 million to $19.4 million. And instead of us having a deficit of 3.7 million, we're actually going to have a little surplus of 842,000 that we can build on for this year, which I'm very excited about. So instead of us ending our fund balance at 10.45%, we will end our balance with a 15.69%, which is a lot healthier than I anticipated. I'm very appreciative to the public for passing the bond, the tax levy, because it has helped us and impacted us tremendously. We're able to do some things that we really needed to do that we weren't going to be able to do, and we really do appreciate the support that you provided for us on that. Does anybody have any questions?
Do I have a motion to?
Second.
Motion to be made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Morris to accept the budget amendment. We have a discussion on it.
I'm certainly appreciative of the hard work and the numbers are much better than, you know. I remember the last couple of times we had budget adjustments, they were going the other direction, so, so this is much nicer.
Yes, it is.
And I want to champion your cause and thank the public for passing that. I remember those meetings were so dismal last year. Everybody got together, community, the board, administration, teachers, staff, everybody. We got the word out how, how, how much our kids needed that. And I'm hopeful going forward.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of accepting the fiscal year 2014-2015 budget amendment, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ayes have it. Item 22, resolution on no tax increase bond election.
It's me again. And I'm going to ask Mr. O'Neal to help me. He, he also worked on this with me. In the 2010-11 year, our, our revenues, that's the year that our revenues started to tank. And so the district experienced a significant decline in our operating revenue. In the past, we were able to fund our capital funds with our, by moving some of our revenue that was in the operating funds over and to the capital funds. And we were able to do our projects that way. Because we were not able to do that, we had to pass a $25 million bond issue in order to meet those needs. This is the last year, the final year of those funds, and we're kind of still in the same situation. We have, right now, our balances are looking good, but if we have to dip back into that operating fund to move money over for capital improvements, we're going to be back in the hole again. So we're wanting to pass a bond resolution so that we can continue to do the work that we need to do. We're seeking to pass a no-tax increase bond issue to be able to help continue to fund these projects. So we're going to call it Prop A, and it's going to be for $31 million. And we're going to talk about some of the different things, there's, I'm not going to read the resolution to you, but that's what the ballot wording is going to say. And it's just that we're going to unchange, keep the rate the same at the 30 cents per hundred thousand of assessed valuation for this bond issue. The bonds will be sold in two installments. The first installment will be sold as soon, if we're able to pass this, it will be sold as soon as we can do it. And it will be for $16 million. The first part of this project, well, Mr. Morris alluded to earlier, is we will be working on some safety and security projects, and then also the facility and technology improvements that we continue to do. And then in 2017, we'll sell the other part of that, 15 million. And we are going to be doing some studying and looking to turning one of our schools into a STEM school. And also, we will continue with our facility and technology improvements. I'm going to turn this portion over to Mr. O'Neal. He worked with Amoresco, who has been doing the studies along with Mr. O'Neal, and he will talk about some of these projects that we're going to do.
Amoresco is doing a full and comprehensive study of all our facilities. However, for this, for this bond, they focused on a couple of items that we thought would be important to our district in working with the board, and we did have a bond task force that helped us to focus on a couple of items. One of them was the district-wide security enhancement, which we're estimating will be $7 million of that bond money. And as you can see, it's to do certain things to make our schools more secure, as Mr. Morris alluded to earlier. And this is, a lot of you will know that a lot of our schools don't have the offices in front of the school. By the time you get to the office, you've already been in the building for some time. That's not as secure as we'd like our buildings to be. So one of the big things in this, in this enhancement would be to move the offices in those, in those pickers schools up to the front and rearrange the, the front of the school, so that would be provided. Also create vestibules, so there'll be secure vestibules, you don't just walk into the building, walk to a vestibule which directs you into the office, or if allowed, you'll be directed through double doors to go into the school district if, for staff members. It'll have all ADA compatible, it will have air phone entry systems, which is a, which is audiovisual and can be the fob or card. And as you can see, just all the things that involve in doing those types of things to, to improve that. This just kind of gives you an overview of where those office relocation vestibules are. You can see those schools there, I won't go through the whole list. But those are the ones that don't have offices in the front that would need to be relocated and add a vestibule. Now, we wanted to rearrange just the current office to make it better to work with the vestibule, that we wouldn't move it, we'd rearrange, maybe move a door, move, move one part of the office and rearrange it. And you can see the list of those locations that would be involved in that type of arrangement. This very small print just tells you what the vestibule is, which I alluded to before with, with double doors, different entries, they're locked and secured at all times. They, they are equipped emergency exits and so forth, and I won't read that all to you, but I think most people will understand what a secure vestibule is. A visitor management system, which is, I think, one of the, one of the interesting and really good parts of this, so I'll explain a little bit more than I normally would. But it's a system called Hall Pass or similar system, in which they, a person would come in and show their ID, they would scan the ID. It would, it would check things that we would customize as alerts for us, such as a national sex offenders database, if there's any restraining orders, custody issues, et cetera, that would come up. If there wasn't any of those, it would print a badge for that person to wear while they're in our schools. The air phone entry system kind of explains similar to what we have here at the admin center. As I said before, they'll make it all ADA compliant with automatic doors, ramps, sidewalks, whatever necessary in each individual location. And then they also want to upgrade our surveillance system. As you know, sometimes their pictures aren't as clear as we'd like them to be when we're, when we're trying to do something with, with surveillance and with security. They want to put in a five-megapixel camera system, which has a higher quality resolution, a gigabyte connection system, infrared systems on the outside, and a hard drive-based recording system, which is better than the DVR system that is generally used, and will provide more coverage at all of our schools. The STEM concept conversion, the, the recommendation was to use McClure High School, the M5 building, to convert the entire building. You can see some of the statistics about that current building, which add to what, why the, why the cost is what it is. The conversion to a STEM wing would include all these things, ADA accessibility, new storefront, new flooring, new ceiling, new lighting, new efficiency HVAC. Basically, instead of reading everything, we would, not completely, but virtually gut the building. And it would become a new building, new equipment, new, new everything, so that would, it would meet those standards of STEM for all the things they would need. Technology and equipment and cabinetry, and make pods and adjoining rooms that are necessary to meet a STEM concept system. They, they also would recommend to us that the little theater be relocated to, on campus to another space and reutilize that space for the STEM school. They said it's large enough that would put us in a, in a category that's, would be very good for us because it could bring competition for these large-scale robotics and other demonstrations to our district. And it can be done there instead of at a university or junior college, that actually be able to bring into our facility, bring recognition to our schools and our STEM program. Just kind of a little idea of where, where it would be located, both floors, ground floor and the second floor of the, of the M5 building. Also in that, the program would be done through studies with, with the board, with the committee, and also we look into curriculums, see what curriculums need before they make final plans. And of course, any final plans will come before the work for approval. The final thing that Ms. Madruzik already spoke a little bit about is the other improvement needs for, for the rest of the term of that bond. And there are the common categories that you've seen over the last five years, which are equipment, other capital replacement, and infrastructure and building systems, including our paving, flooring, our MEP, and our HVAC. It allocates from our schools some larger replacement outlays that we have to do each year. Some other projects that come up, and especially emergency repair projects and some safety projects. And then, of course, technology serves us, which would account for the balance of the bond. And I would do want to thank Amoresco, because they did do the cost estimates and evaluations for us, have been working really hard. And I would like to add to that, that they are not done, this is our short-term plan they're, they're making for us. They are also working with us to evaluate every part of the school, 28 different areas of each location, not just our school, but every building we have, to come up with a long-term, 15-year plan. And these are all the certifications they have that are, that you'll see surrounding their name. They've been an excellent company so far for us.
We do a no-cost bond issue?
Second.
Motion's been made by Ms. Hogshead, second by Mr. Schrader. Questions, comments?
I just, I just want the, the public to know how important this is to the, to the school district, that we get this passed in April. It's vital that we don't have to turn around and take it out of operating funds to, to help maintain our schools, so.
Yeah, following up on that, basically, if you look at the numbers from Ms. Madruzik's proposal, if we don't pass it, we go back to the 11% balances, which is, that means we have to go to the bank and borrow money every November and December, and that's not a good way to operate.
All in favor of the resolution on the no-tax increase bond election? We're on the ballot for Article 7, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Ayes have it, we have a bond election. Next, item is number 23, Policy 4034, Board Member Expenses. This is the second reading. Committee of three Board, Board of Education members met about a month and a half ago to revise Policy 4034 for Board Member Expenses and seeking a fair and equitable distribution of assigned services and equipment. This policy is brought before the court for approval. Do I have a motion for to accept Policy 4034?
So I'll move.
Second.
Motion been made by Mr. Eber, seconded by Mr. Morris. We have a discussion.
I'll keep the chart. From reading this policy, I feel that it implies that members elected to the Board of Education are not trustworthy. That's why we have to put over a gatekeeper over them to keep them in line. I know that I'm trustworthy, and if you feel that you cannot be trusted, go ahead and vote yes on this policy. I'll be voting no.
Do you have a question, questions, comments?
I think we just need to make some modifications, but, you know, we've gotten other things right now.
All in.
Oh, could we have a real call vote, it'll make it clear.
Donna, you were, you were on the committee, right?
Mm-hmm.
So I'm, I'm going on the committee's recommendation, so.
Yeah, I was on, I was on the committee, had a lot of questions about this because I haven't had experience on the board. And so, a lot of the things that we've discussed, I had, I questioned, I had questions about them, but, and I, they were explained to me. And as we've talked more about it and have listened to other board members, I do have some other, just some reservations about, maybe a few changes that need to be made, or to be looked at.
We could do that, couldn't we? How's that go? We have to do it again?
Pull it back.
Oh.
I think we should do that. I think there are a few things that we probably need to have a little more discussion about, and then maybe semantics. Some of it is as simple as that, and some of it is, is I've got a clearer understanding of a few other things that might need to be, to be looked at. On my behalf, I'm just saying for me.
If we need to pull it back to reevaluate it a little bit, I see no problem doing that.
So, in order to do that, Mr. Eber, we have to withdraw his motion, correct?
Is there semantics that we can change now while we're talking, instead of thinking back to many? I don't know what, what you're talking about, what semantics you're talking about. I know before you talked about grammar, so I don't know if that's, I don't know what you're talking about, so could it be?
Words like gatekeeper. Words like gatekeeper and, no, I, I just think, I don't know if there's a, there's a little bit more than that that needs to be discussed. I think we just need to... a little bit more than that that needs to be discussed, and I think we just need to...
I'm just going by what you'd said before, that it was just some grammar, so that's why I was asking.
Because this is something that members of the board have been discussing for, actually, four years now since I've been on the board, regards to Board Member's participation in community events, the use of the technology, the returning, or the lack of returning of the technology. These are all, just a culmination that seem to come up in discussions almost on a monthly basis. And that's why, you know, you convene, you convene the three people. I, and all three of us worked in agreement completely, there were some compromises that I definitely made regards to the use of, this, the school district paying for internet services, which I still oppose, but arguments were made that there were some Board Members that potentially could come on the board and not have the funds to pay for that. Their recommendation was made regarding the Board President having a cellphone that has a unique number that is traveled from one Board President to another. Myself, I'm, I'm happy with my phone, it's a smartphone, it works very well, but I also know there's other individuals who do not have smartphones, that maybe become Board President and would need a smartphone, so then they would be, in my opinion, need to go out and buy one, but instead, the district can provide one.
And then the other question too, about grandfathering in people who are now receiving internet services at home, so there's some Board Members who are, and some Board Members who are not.
That is correct.
Right.
Yes. And also with the use of the technology, myself, I don't have any district technology, the district doesn't have any of that. And some have been on the board for a while, and they have a laptop or a computer. And that's where that whole discussion about those being grandfathered in, so they wouldn't have to return those, get a new piece of device, because they've been using a particular computer for a period of time.
No, 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 services like internet services from, that's being paid for in their homes.
Yes.
And some people are getting that, and some people aren't.
Correct. Okay.
Wait. Now, I'm getting confused. I thought that internet would be provided if you couldn't have internet, right? So even the future, it could be paid for, is it?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, if you choose that you want the district to get paid for your internet, it would be available, yes.
But do you understand that there's still some Board Members today who get their internet paid for?
Oh, okay, yeah.
We didn't know that, right?
I don't, yeah.
Yeah.
It's been on, it's been going on for a long time.
Yeah, we need to, really need to talk a little bit more about, about that too.
Well, and I am one of those, because it was from the very beginning that I, when I got, when they brought the internet, they said, you know, here's the internet. I tried two years ago to get off the district internet, and it was more of a hassle to get me off than it was to pay the little sum to keep me on, because I had to go through all these hoops and everything. Paul's shaking, he said, yes, that's true.
Because I went through just the opposite, when the district came to me and said, no, we need to provide internet for you, and I said, oh, I didn't know that. And of course, it was four or five months of bills being unpaid and all kinds of messes getting it straightened up. So, Dr. Genali, is he still here?
Yes, sir.
I think you said that you think you can get us off without a lot of unhappiness?
I will do my best, and in strong likelihood, that would be a correct...
And breaks in service, that was the problem, that it was going to be a long break in service when I tried to get off. And again, originally, I didn't ask to get me out or anything else, and I don't think anybody else did either. So, and again, I tried to get off.
That's not bad, if he can work his miracle.
Yeah.
My other question, Dr. Genali, while you're there, I think you and I had a discussion about, that you can have a unique number automatically transferred to the Board President's phone cellphone, is that correct?
That is correct. We can accommodate providing a phone number, which is a Google account phone number, that could be transferred from cellphone to cellphone, which would be, and it can be changed at will, so it can change from one Board, Board President to the next Board President.
The challenge I see with that, and I used to go in, and you and I had a conversation with one called Second Line, that I used for my own employees, so I didn't have to have them carry two. Ultimately, they dropped the Second Line because of the connection difficulties, but I think most importantly for me, is that I receive my district email through my smartphone, so I'm able to respond immediately. And again, Dr. Lurie, myself, text. Him and I text more than my wife and I did. And that's something that you need a smartphone in order to be able to do that. So, you know, if somebody just had a flip phone and be able to receive those phone calls, you're still not going to be able to manage the text messages and emails that need to come through on your phone. And having that additional phone would prevent us from doing that.
The other, the other advantage to having a President's phone is that it can be preloaded with all the numbers for administrators and schools, and, and as we've learned over the last couple of years, media, you know, there were, there were times I've gotten a lot of phone calls, and I've got a lot of phone calls from media, that, that would, could be preloaded in there, so at least you knew who you were talking to when they called you, and that would be a huge advantage.
Another advantage I see in a President's phone is the fact that there has been a time when we were not getting our phone messages from the administration office, or our emails, or whatever, and so it would be very helpful to the community for them to be able to always say, this is how I can get ahold of the Board President or the school board. That's why I thought it was of value.
I think the other, the other issue that came up too, was the process for getting services, for example, if you had a problem with your, your laptop, that we'd have to go through the Board President and ask him for permission to, well, let him know that that needed to be fixed, and that he'd have to go to the person to have the laptop fixed. And I think the concern was that, why could we not go to the person directly, rather than going through you and having you go to the person? And I think that's the question that you brought up about having that trust, that trust factor.
That's, well, it all boils down to the trust factor. But, you know, my question is, when is the President going to say, no, you can't get your computer fixed?
Well, I can answer my thoughts on that. It totally takes administration out. What I like about that is there gets to be a conflict of interest with administration sometimes. I guess what I'm saying is, if you walk up to somebody's office and say, here, fix this, what are they going to say? You know, they, they aren't going to say no.
Is the President going to say no?
No.
Is the President going to say no?
No, what I'm saying, no, but what I'm saying is, is that a direction of the board, and it, and it provides a separation, so it avoids any even appearance, in my opinion, of some sort of conflict of interest. And I like that, I like that. You know, it, I, I don't know, I'm articulating that, but it just keeps it totally away from administration, and it's, it's like a board, you know.
It prevents internal control.
Yeah.
And for me, it's a total reason, is that it prevents Board Members to go into a IT member of the district and say, hey, I need this software loaded on my computer, it's not working properly. Well, it's unrelated to our functions as a school board. We're just asking them to do a personal favor for us. Secondly, it also came out that if a person's technology was broken, they would call up and say, you know, my tablet broke, and can you order me a new one? But they would never return the one that was broken, so then they would have two, but we never know if the person was ever broken.
Has that happened before?
Yes.
The problem, the problem we need on all of this is, we need some facts and figures. When, we don't need to know who at this point, but when did that happen? And talking about the dinners, Ms. Madrusik and I had a discussion about this, and if I'm right, check my numbers on this, is my memory loss, probably two, three years ago, we were spending almost $30,000 for dinners, unless you were less than ten, without a gatekeeper. It can be done.
Well, I mean, facts and figures, would that be a personal issue? Because it's something that you would, I don't think really would say in public, because it's identifying, just like the last part of the...
The twelve.
Identifying people with the...
Mr. Brown, you would like to say something?
I'm holding it down.
Well, so right across from there, motions to be made, and seconded to accept the revised Policy 4034. Mr. Schrader asked whether the votes made, that it is a roll call, but then there was some discussion that perhaps we need to pull it and recommit it back in the committee to make some tweaks to the policy.
Can I ask something? I call the vote, and if the vote's rejected, then it can go back to committee. If it's passed, it goes on to...
I like it.
All right. Mr. Morris, if you'd please, if you'd kindly do the roll call vote.
Mr. Eber.
Aye.
Mr. Brown.
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
No.
Dr. Murray?
No.
Secretary of Arts, aye.
Aye.
Mr. Eber, Nurse Shubham?
Aye.
The vote applied to, ayes have it, the Policy 4034 to change. All right.
Mr. President, I'd like to bring up a point of future work under subcommittee, is that we will now need to change Policy 4D21. The duties of President, you've changed those duties.
All right. At this time, we're going to go into executive session.
Mr. Eber?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Mr. Schrader?
Aye.
Secretary of Arts, aye.
Aye.
And Nurse Shubham?
Aye.